The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Truup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnolditz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Kohn, Alderman Williamson, President, oh, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Truup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Cruzen. Nineteen present.
Quorum being present, we would be led today in prayer by Reverend Rodney Francis, Washington, from Washington Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us, let us pray. Almighty God, as this board of community servants meet to conduct the matters of city business, guide their hearts and their minds. Without question, there are complex issues before this body, and I'm sure they are of diverse opinions. We pray that your ethics of love, justice, equity, and fairness will guide their deliberations so that the differences between them will result in a mutually successful conclusion for the citizens of our city. Sharpen their intellects to think creatively about solutions to the challenges of the day, and above all, oh God, heighten their concern and compassion towards the needs of their constituents, in particular, the least among us, our children, our elderly, our disabled, and our homeless. Oh God, as they work for the peace and prosperity of the city, gird each with a high sense of personal integrity, and protect their hearts against the subtle lure that seeks to call to placing personal ambitions above the public good. And finally, oh God, but certainly not least, bless their families, for without whom they cannot do the work that they do. Grant each of them your grace and peace as they seek to serve our great city in such a time as this.
Spin with our regular order of business, take our courtesy resolution calendar. I move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar. I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twentieth. Alderman from the twentieth, would you like to approach the dice?
Mr. President, members of the board, good morning. You all passed this end bank resolution on pertaining to the sweatshop free procurement, but we were doing a lot of other business before the summer came upon us and we went down for, for a month. So, we thought it would be appropriate to recognize that today. As we all know, there are people who are looking for jobs in this country, and there are people in other parts of the world who are being ill abused because of the wages and the health and safety laws and so forth. We are part of that equation because the city of St. Louis expends over half a million dollars to purchase uniforms, bedding, shoes, and the like. So, I was approached by Mr. Art Martin, an attorney who was in the city of St. Louis and a, an individual with whom I went to school, who has since died after our passage of this resolution. But we have with us today as well Ms. Marilyn Lorenz from the St. Louis Interfaith Committee on Latin America, and of course, our distinguished Supply Commissioner Freddie Dunlap. And I've asked today as well for Alderwoman Marlene Davis to be up here because she was a major co-sponsor of this, as was Alderman Conway. Again, it may seem as if we're not connected in any way with South America, with China, and so forth, but we are in that unwittingly our dollars, our taxpayer dollars from our constituents can go to support some of the very inappropriate ways that we treat some of the workers throughout the world. So, this is a, this is a great accomplishment that you all accomplished, and we wanted to recognize this more appropriately. We didn't want to extend some of our meetings, as you might recall, right before we, we broke. And I did want to make mention of Mr. Art Martin, who was a real leader in the legal community. He started out really as a labor organizer and discovered, as, as a worker, and discovered that he might be able to accomplish more goals and be more successful if he became an attorney. He and I were classmates. In fact, we went up to Iowa in 2004 to work on behalf of Congress, the unsuccessful attempt of Congressman Gettner at the time to become our president. After that, of course, some of us, Alderwomen Florida and I went up to Iowa after that. But Art Martin incredibly died around Frederictown, Missouri, after biking there, and he had sent me this resolution. I would ask that Marilyn Lorenz might have a few comments here about the importance of this resolution, for which we're very grateful to the city of St. Louis for making sure that, that we have something like this in place. Marilyn?
Thank you so much for having this opportunity to speak with you. When we discovered that St. Louis had a buy-American procurement, we, we wanted you all to know that sometimes, as you know, there are sweatshops in the United States. The point that brought us to this is we've always been working on economic justice, but when we looked at the immigration issue, there's a push in polls. And so, this is a way for us to make it possible for people working here and abroad to have a fairly, fair wage, a living wage, to have the right to organize, not have child labor, and all those things that we don't want to happen. St. Louis was the second city in Missouri. University City passed this resolution in October of 2010, and I'm very happy to announce that the county is looking at this very seriously. We have four council members that are working on passing this, this resolution in the county, and then we'll go to the other municipalities so that St. Louis, and maybe even Missouri, would be a sweat-free state and city. I'll turn this over to Freddie Dunlap.
Thank you. President Reed, members of the board, guests. You know, I can talk about sweatshops because I've seen them. I spent, in my prior life, I spent four years roaming between Thailand and Vietnam with the United States Air Force, and I saw firsthand what sweatshops looked like. I saw the conditions. I saw things that people had no choice but to do. I would like this morning to thank Alderman Schmidt. He's the one who opened my eyes on this with the city and got the ball rolling. A sweatshop, just so everybody understands, can be defined as a workplace where workers are intimidated. They work long hours, low rates of pay, and few, if any, benefits, among other things. Now, it's most important to understand, when we think about sweatshops, a lot of folks think that sweatshops are only in third-world companies, countries. Sweatshops are located anyplace where the garment industry is located, even here in the good old U.S. of A. We do have sweatshops. It's my job, based on Resolution Number 79, to ensure that the city of St. Louis's taxpayer dollars are not spent with sweatshops. As a result, we are going to require all of our garment vendors to provide a certification telling us the company that makes the materials, the items that they sell to us, given us addresses, given us names, and certifying that they have visited these companies and they can just, they can, they have determined that sweatshop labor is not being used. If, in the meantime, we find out that sweatshops are being used, we do have means to approach these vendors and try and get things rectified, and if they don't rectify things according to the satisfaction of my office, we will go to the Board of E&amp;A and ask that these vendors be disbarred from doing any further business with the city of St. Louis. I thank all of you for supporting the resolution. It's a good day, and it's a good thing for the city of St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and I want to thank the President, obviously, for allowing this, the opportunity, and for all of you for supporting this very good work to help our workers within this country and elsewhere in the world. Thanks again.
And I also want to thank Alderman Schmidt, Twentieth Ward, Alderwoman Davis, Nineteenth Ward, for bringing that resolution forward. It's a very important resolution, and, you know, we, we need to make sure that there's always protections for workers and everything, but I really, really appreciate the fact that they brought that forward. Then move in the second, that they will adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. With that, return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest, any introduction of our guest. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, my honored guest, the AT&amp;T family, Ameren U.E. Group, and my very special guest today is Mr. Mika Hubbard of the Fifth Ward.
There you go. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to have today as my honored guest, Gary Otten from the Painters District Council, Number Two.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we gather here in October 5th, which is Do Something Nice Day, so I imagine we should all take that to heart today. We are on the brink of Columbus Day, the first man to prove you don't need to ask directions to become famous.
All right. All from the thirteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the September 21st minutes.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth. Seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. For the city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line items seven through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 182, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3951 Cleveland, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 183, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3825 Cleveland, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 184, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3932 Castleman, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 185, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5237 through 5239 Bischoff, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 186, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3614 Arsenal. Board Bill 187, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, in ordinance approved, in ordinance establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on North First Street at Angelica, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 188, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, in ordinance establishing a stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Arsenal at Oak Hill, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 189, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance amending ordinance 66552 by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement in the 4300 through 04, 4307 through 27, and 4337 through 39 John and 3727 Carter, and 3724 through 28 West Florissant. Board Bill 190, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2710 through 16 Lafayette, Lafayette containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills 182, 183, 184, 185, and 186. To the Streets Committee, Board Bills 187 and 188. And to the Housing Committee, Board Bills 189 and 190. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 181 into Neighborhood Development, and 178 into Huts.
So noted.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill 162, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance approving petition of various owners of certain real property to establish the Grand Center Area Community Improvement District, establishing the Grand Center Area Community Improvement District containing a severability and an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee. Board Bill 123, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into agreement with Casa de Salo for the Needs Assessment Project, containing an emergency clause. Following board bill was reported out of Public Safety Committee. Board Bill 53, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and Alderman Kohn, in ordinance prohibiting harassment of pedestrian and bicyclists containing definition prohibiting, prohibited activities and a penalty clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 138, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Texas at Crittenden, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 175, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on an irregular-shaped excess portion of Seventh Street, beginning at Sarah Street. Board Bill 174, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on an irregular portion of Olive Street, adjacent to City Block 1042 West and 1057, and adjacent to 3411 Olive. Board Bill 176, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on an irregular portion of Fourteenth Street, beginning at Lafayette, Sulard Street, beginning at Thirteenth Street and Fourteenth Street. Following board bill was reported out Transportation and Commerce Committee. Board Bill 80, Board Bill 86, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute a professional service agreement for fleet vehicles and special equipment maintenance repair services at Lambert Airport, containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 114, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, in ordinance recommended by the Port Authority Commission, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter to a second amendment, amendment to lease by and between the city through its mayor and comptroller and ACL transportation services here and after called the LEC. Board Bill 156, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, in the total amount of $4 million from the Airport Development Fund to the Airport Building Fund and Environments Project, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 157, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the mayor and the comptroller with the recommendation of the Director of Airports to enter into, to accept and enter into and execute a grant agreement offered by the United States of America, the grant agreement to provide for the reimbursement of payments to the city for costs incurred at the airport for city-approved public works and improvements program containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 166, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance pertaining to a 99-year lease with the city and Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission, and pertaining to the simultaneous swap of certain property on Shreve, which is currently being used by the city's street department. Board Bill 180, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the News, Gift, and Specialty Retail Concession Agreement between the city and HG St. Louis JV. That's the extent of our second readings.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize. Alderman from the sixth, you recognize.
The President, members of the board, I would like to defer to my colleague from the eighteenth floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to introduce as my special guest today, Mr. Shara Jones, who's here.
So, wise move, Alderman from the sixth. Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the board, I think we should probably also recognize your father, who's also here, and also Gary Otten with the International Union of Painters and the Light Trades District Council, Number Two, as our guest today.
We also have with us Percy Green from Fire. Thanks for joining us here today. Alderman from the fourth, you look like you're about to jump up for some, oh, you did. I took your thunder, sorry about that. Dispense with line item 14, perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill 88, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Carter and Alderman Schmidt, in ordinance adopting the Uniform Plumbing Code 2009 Edition as the Plumbing Code of the City. Board Bill 168, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, in ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, to fund the Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth. Seconded by Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of perfection consent.
Dispense with line item 16, third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill 124, 125, 126, 127, 130, 131, and 134.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth. I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Truup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alder, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnolditz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Kohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderwoman Young, Alderwoman Behringer. Twenty-six, aye votes.
Aye votes, stay in the motion of Alderman from the thirteenth, and third read and final pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill 108, Floor Substitute, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen. Alderman French, Moore, Hubbard, Arnolditz, Howard, Kennedy, Davis, Schmidt, and Williamson, in ordinance relating to a city recreation facility in O'Fallon Park, authorizing and directing the execution of a cooperation agreement between the city and the YMCA, and authorizing an appropriation of $126,000 from the Special Parks Fund 1122, to help offset one-time startup costs and other costs associated with such cooperation agree, and agreement.
Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill Number 108, Floor Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we, third read and finally, and I mean finally, pass Board Bill 108, Floor Substitute.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-first. I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Alderman, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and final pass Board Bill 108, Floor Substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Truup.
There's been a request for a previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment, and final passage.
Aye vote, your third read and final pass the aforementioned bill. Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 124, 125, 126, 127, 130, 131, 134, and 108, Floor Substitute.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore Dispense with line items 21, 22. Missed lines unfinished business.
We have none.
Alderman from the ninth.
Mr. President, members of the board, tomorrow Benton Park has its annual chalk art event and its last concert for the year, so there's going to be activities all day long. The chalk art starts at 11:00, so if you're an artist and want to put your talents on the sidewalk, you've got to be there earlier than that to register. There's going to be entertainment all day, and that's why we're praying for the rain to go away. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, do you hear?
Yes. Wednesday, Public Safety Committee meeting at, at 1:30 p.m. in the Leisure Room. Friday, full board meeting, 10 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to recognize a Dogtown resident, Anna Krackey, who is a prosecutor in the Circuit Attorney's Office for her, her work this year. And I also wanted to invite everybody to the halfway to the day 5K run, which is happening on Sunday in Dogtown. It's put on by the St. James the Greater Athletic Association, helps raise money so the kids at the school can... the kids at the school can play sports. It's a fun event. Second year we've done it. You don't have to get up really early in the morning, like most 5K runs, doesn't start until 11:30, so I hope to see you out there on Sunday. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind everybody and announce that the Bosnian United Organization and the Bosnian Chamber of Commerce are having a Bosnian festival on Sunday at 1 o'clock, Cronulette Park at the Boathouse. I'd like everybody to come and participate and enjoy the Eastern European culture that the Bosnians have, and enjoy some of their food and cultural heritage. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman from the tenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This Sunday, the 7th of October, will be the festival of the Church of St. Ambrose. Please come by from noon till 6:00. It's a Catholic church, there'll be alcohol and gambling. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
We can't top alcohol and gambling, but we do have Lindfest going on in Lindenwood Park tomorrow, and it's going to have a lot of food from the neighborhood, and hopefully everybody comes out. And I'd like to recognize, because I didn't recognize my guests earlier, but help from the firefighters and celeste from the realtors.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow morning from 10 a.m. to noon at Washington Tabernacle Church, it's right on the corner of Compton and Washington, there will be an issues forum talking about those things that are on the ballot for November, getting clarity and understanding, and representatives will be there from government and also various organizations to get out the vote. So, if you have a chance, and for those who are listening, if you want to know more about the ballot issues for November, please come by. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also tomorrow, October 6th, is the picnic for the Spanish society located in South St. Louis at 7107 Michigan. That starts at 1 o'clock to, I believe, 10 in the evening. So, if you're out and want to try some chinitos and Spanish food, please stop by.
Also, Sister Strut is tomorrow morning. You can get the information from, what's the best place to get the information from Sister Strut? Yeah, Clear Channel's website. I'm sure Alderwoman Davis can also give you information on it, but it's a really good event, and if you can make it out, make it out to Sister Strut tomorrow. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
We have one Alderman who, for some reason, is absent today. And I move that we, we, yeah, excuse the Alderwoman from the second ward and the sixteenth ward due to necessary absence.
It's been moved by Alderman from the thirteenth. I entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, 10 a.m., October 12th.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth. I entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand and adjourn.